We'll be at the end and we ask that the meeting remain to around three minutes. First on the agenda is the approval minutes of October twenty seventh, twenty twenty one, and November ninth, twenty twenty one. Did anyone go over those or have any questions or concerns with those?
I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as noted for November and October.
A second down.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Five zero. And moving down the agenda, we have Town Hall Virtual Meetings and Audio Solutions with Councilperson Cornick.
Yep. Good evening. Happy holidays to everyone. Tonight, we have a guest, Richard Turner from CMC. Richard is an expert in audio visual. And Councilman Hall and I've met with Richard a couple of weekends ago, and he was gracious enough to come by and kind of enlighten us on what the best way forward would be for our virtual meetings. So with that said, hopefully I gave you enough intro that, but no, I'll heat the floor to Richard.
All right, great. Thank you, council members and mayor. Great to be here and staff. I'm glad to provide you with an opportunity to dialogue about what can be done with the AV installation that will help both increase the access on any new platform, not just Zoom, but any other web-based teleconferencing platform like Zoom or GoToMeeting, Teams, et cetera, as well as help us with the cable cast of your, and streaming of your meetings as we do and have been doing in the past to Channel twenty-three, as well as to Facebook and to YouTube as well. So it covers a lot of bases, fortunately. And so, one of the things that I wanted to, you know, look at, first, there's a little bit of background. Of course, you know that we've been doing this prior to the pandemic. It was about one time, about every thirteen weeks. And I always felt since joining the organization that that doesn't quite generate the kind of civic engagement I think that was intended, and was more looked at as a budgetary constraint, and was like, well, divide it all up and we'll find a way to cover the meetings. The pandemic came along and we became obvious that Zoom could be a solution, not only to try and get those meetings out with its technology, but of course, your constituents and your residents started to recognize that that's a great way and expectation to make sure that they could regularly participate in the meetings. So we have been working and trying to figure out how to bridge those two worlds of working in the world of Zoom and how it works as a technology and how cable and broadcast works, and have worked to merge essentially those two technology platforms. At the same time, I have been really giving the charge to both to my raising the awareness to my board as well as to my staff to try and figure out ways in which we can more efficiently cover council meetings in our towns so that we could increase our coverage. A number of the towns have made the commitments to actually put in fixed installations. That means that microphones and cameras were fixed, which meant we didn't have to spend time loading a gear up into a truck. That's labor time that I had to come out of a budget in order to support the towns. And for those locations where there are fixed installations, essentially, I can replace that labor effort of putting equipment in trucks, driving it here, installing it, taking it down, putting it back on the shelf with just time actually covering meetings. Of course, that proposed a budgetary issue. How do we find the money for the equipment? Some of the towns, including Sykesville and Hampstead, utilized some of the pandemic funds that were made available, purchased equipment, and that's how they installed their equipment. One of the things I recognize is that towns' budgets are not set necessarily for AV equipment. So we want to find the most effective measure of ways in which we can make a design that helps that. To that end, we've worked on various proposals, actually going back pre-pandemic, back to twenty nineteen, and that involved bringing in, because we are just not, we're not a vendor, we don't do the actual installation. We can guide the discussion and make, give you some advice around those decisions, but we don't actually come in and poke holes in walls and pull cables. That's really somebody else's, someone else's area. We know how to connect equipment. We know what's the best kind of equipment. When we selected equipment, we try to make sure that it's standardized so that when our staff operates it, they experience the same kind of equipment in the same place, so now they know how to support it. Importantly, in that relationship that we have with you, that support comes at no additional cost. So when we make recommendations and can provide that kind of a solution where someone else might come in and actually do the installation, if it's equipment that we know, it's equipment that we're prepared to support, and it doesn't cost you anything after that. So any of the services that we provide doesn't typically have a cost tag to it, a price tag to it. And so, we were able to effectively design an installation for, in the case of Hampstead and Sykesville, that met their budgetary requirements. We came in and after they purchased the equipment, we actually connected the equipment. They had someone else install it and do the wiring. And so, we then basically configured it. We know how the audio works and were able to configure it in a way that supports whatever requirements that they have. Sometimes requirements change. And so, in some cases, for example, in the case of Hampstead, they told us, after they got through the initial crush of the pandemic and people returned, they said, "We are not going back to virtual meetings." Last week, they called us up and said, "We have to do a hybrid virtual meeting." So we found a way to try and, again, bring them equipment, and because that equipment was standardized, we knew how to bring in a solution that they could go back to potentially doing a hybrid meeting if they needed to. So those are some of the benefits that CMC provides in this partnership. And so, as we propose things, we try to figure out what's the right budget versus what's the right standardization of equipment that works both for broadcast for Zoom as well as for the town. As you know, this is not an ideal setup, right? You've got equipment that's on the floor, you've got cables taped down all over the place. And what would be ideal is to come up with an installation that would allow us to simply connect something into an existing jack, minimize the kind of potential for unsightly cables or tripping hazard of any kind. Safety is a first concern, most definitely. And so, to that end, we are trying to focus on that and figure out within the constraints of what you've got physically, as well as aesthetically that you're trying to achieve. We try to make sure that we take those into account as we give you recommendations. But ultimately, the decision is up to you as a council. So that just provides some background and some context for what we've done with some of the other municipalities and what we can offer to new vendors. In the process and working and trying to respond to the needs that are here, we know that it's a challenge of trying to figure out what to do when CMC is not here. If we're not covering a meeting, then, you know, how do you support the desire to have an extension to your residents? And to that end, I'm prepared to explore what would it take for us to do actually all meetings that you have, that you want to make public, rather than just a select few, not including work sessions. But that doesn't seem to be effective because often what the community needs to hear is what's happening in those work sessions if they are public. Often, those decisions lead towards, I presume it's like this for other municipalities, that the decisions that happen in the discussion that happens in work session leads to a decision in your regular council sessions. And for the community residents to be involved, they probably need to hear the whole conversation. So rather than hearing like, "Well, I didn't hear about this," when did you make this decision? Or how is it that you came to this decision? That having more of that available to them increases their understanding and engagement effectively with you as a governing body. So to that end, that's what our mission is, is to try and increase that level of engagement. So I don't know if there's any questions about CMC, where, again, we're not a vendor. We don't, we don't sell equipment. We do work with others who do sell equipment, and we try to come up with the most effective solution for you.
So, Richard, if you will, can you, so this is a little different than what we normally have. Essentially, our council meeting is broadcast by CMC, and one of the things that we agreed on that Saturday was to keep this equipment here.
Yes.
So, I mean, that's why you're seeing it. And then, you know, I know Richard touched on this, but eventually, what we're going to have is new equipment that'll take that plate, that, the place of that.
Yeah, the idea would be that, similar to what we've done in other locations, is that we find a way to permanently affix the cameras up on the walls so that it would eliminate tripods and anything on the floor. And then, in terms of audio, is identifying what's the best right kind of mix of microphones so that you can pick up the audio and pick up just the audio you want. You may not want to hear anything that goes on in the gallery or in your audience, but just those who are designated to speak, right? So certain microphones are designed to pick up a very wide pickup area. You can use less of them. That lowers your cost. But you have then the challenge of identifying, is that conversation that you're hearing in the back row the one you want broadcast? So there are some technical considerations of the kinds of equipment that are selected, and that has an impact on the budget, quite honestly. There are other pieces of equipment that just make it easier for CMCT broadcast, quite honestly. And so, in the last proposal that we gave, again, that proposal was just a concept. It included list price for equipment. It was about eleven thousand dollars, for example, assuming that if it were sent out to a vendor, that they would mark down from list price to some discount. They might include some installation, or how it got installed would be a consideration. There would be wires and other accessories that might be necessary. So those are just trying to give you an idea of a concept for a budget. The concepts that were proposed by other vendors, going back to twenty nineteen, was in the range of thirty-five thousand dollars. And I said, "That's too much." So again, we're always looking for ways that we can achieve the, get a more permanent installation, but keep that cost as manageable as possible. The other factor is that there have been changing layouts for the way in which the meeting could be convened. And I know COVID, of course, requiring a level of separation made it more challenging for you as a group to try and figure out how to do that. I've included in, let me give you a copy. Yeah, you've got a copy right there so you can see as well. No, yeah, that's, if you want, yeah. There are four slots on this.
Yeah, we got one.
That extra copy, you can probably read one. So, the, the first one is, first disclaimer, I am not, I am not an architect. Sounds like a line from Star Trek, right? Yep. I'm executive director of a nonprofit who happens to have a good background in technical engineering, about forty years' worth of designing systems. And so, this drawing is not absolutely to scale. But I try to do, make a good faith effort of trying to design what the size of your furniture was, the size and room of the, size of the room. And that does have an impact on our camera angles, how we can pick up things. So I try to balance the requirements of a meeting to coverage of that meeting, and then other factors like egress and ingress. How do people get to the bathroom? What happens when they come in the front door? You know, those kinds of things. So that's the current layout. The second page is the original layout from twenty nineteen, with your question of whether or not that could be a layout. There have been a couple of other discussions of putting things in the corner. And I offer on the third page, an alternative layout. Again, this is one that would reduce your installation costs, because things are co-located on the wall where the electronics are located, which happens to be this back corner over here. These walls over here are harder to wire. They will require surface mounting potentially on the outside of those walls. That will be not as aesthetically pleasing after you've made all this investment in fixing up the space. And so, you have a balancing act of trying to figure out from an installation standpoint what your objectives will be. And we can guide you, but again, we don't make those final decisions, nor will we actually do the installation work. Another vendor, we can recommend vendors, and again, we work with those vendors. And whether or not they actually put conduits and hide those cables in the wall will increase the expense versus avoiding something like this that has cables on the floor. We discussed wireless as a solution. Wireless increases the cost by about a third, just to achieve a wireless solution. And it is not as reliable, unfortunately, because you have interference potentially, transmitters, et cetera. Wired is always a recommended solution. And as we talk, even as we go, increasing the amount of internet access, data ports for you to connect devices directly will improve your performance of your, being able to access data as well at the same time. So there could be some savings of scale by including the digital requirements of data in that installation. Because when you do an installation, probably not everything is foreseen. Certainly, a pandemic was not foreseen when you did, when you designed the space in first place. I also included on the last page is what Sykesville has done. I think that's just by way of information. They chose to do their installation after having some conversation with them in the corner. It, this is a much smaller room than your current room, and I do it just to give you an idea that they had two monitors. You'll see them, they're just sort of these rectangles on the wall, on the lower right, upper left, depending upon how you're looking at the diagram. And they just chose to make it a little bit easier, because I know it's kind of hard. I watch people who are trying to look at the monitor up here, and they're turning their necks around and see what's going on on the monitor, if it's just there. Makes it a little bit challenging sometimes. So, again, just a consideration. So it's, those are some of the factors, and just the room layout itself and the balancing of how to get the wiring and cabling in, which again, is, you know, just something that would need to be done to clean things up. So that gives you just a general idea of addressing some of the infrastructure that you have, and, you know, what those costs would be would probably, one of the next things is once you decide on, yes, this is absolutely the layout that we want, that we will stick with, and even in a post, hopefully soon, a post-pandemic existence. And then getting the specifics of what the installation cost becomes a driver, because there's not a lot of wiggle room on the installation cost. There is some wiggle room on the kinds of equipment we use. So for example, we could spec one particular microphone that does a particular better job. We could say we could make a compromise there. It's kind of hard to make a compromise on putting a hole in the wall and installing cabling as a result.
So I guess one of the things I'll say is, when we had the meeting, one of the main benefits that I was looking for is the fact that, you know, learning Zoom and learning the microphone, the turn the mic on, turn the mic off was a hard, hard part. So my main goal coming into that meeting was, how do we get a system where we basically just, we have the same in-person that we did before the pandemic, where you just talk away with, while still providing that online experience for residents? And that was where CMC really stepped in. And basically, we, if we would agree to put these microphones in, and then I believe there was three cameras as well, they would then be able to run the, for every meeting, where they'll be able to stream it, you know, Facebook, YouTube, and CMC, the cable. So basically, we wouldn't even need the Zoom on each individual computer. It'll all be through the cameras. The computers will obviously be helpful for documents and such, but basically, it would be where you would come here, sit down, start talking away. And that, that really was key to me, because that, that seems like the most streamlined process. We don't have to worry about microphones, interference, anything like that. They really take care of all that. But then it comes down to, the one, one of the thing was is the layout. So if we have the layout where we have now, we'll probably have to put, let's say, three holes in the wall, one over there, one in the middle, and one over here, which would increase the costs somewhat. We, I mean, we're still going to need to get numbers on that, obviously. But I guess really, the decision that we were looking for is, is this the layout we want to keep? And that's kind of how I was leaning, is that this is a working layout. But then it comes back to the work session thing. That would eliminate the ability for us to put the things in the middle. So is that something that we want to do? Or is that something we need to look into, maybe the wireless solution?
What, I mean, I don't see any reason why we couldn't just flip, flip it to the one that Richard showed with us on the other side of the room.
Well, the disadvantage to that is the public, because then the monitors to their back. If you flip it.
So we'd have to get another monitor.
You would have to, well.
We'd have to move it.
Move it over there.
Well, so I guess we have to look at the cost of wiring this whole side of the room versus moving the monitor, because that's what we're talking about.
That, that has wiring as well. So that wire would have to then be moved. So I, I think probably it would be even.
Well, if you think it's going to be even, then I guess it doesn't matter.
But he, he also said that the wireless was the least effective and the most expensive.
That's the problem. I wasn't leaning towards wireless for the main reason of it could interfere, it could, I mean, you could have a battery die, you can, there's so many possibilities. And really, if we were talking, the main thing about if we did put wires in the wall, we can run Ethernet in there as well. So that way, when we do have our laptops, sometimes our laptops froze and such, that would help with that. It'll keep it from ever freezing because you would have a wired connection for internet as well.
So, just to give you an idea, you would weigh the difference, the cost difference of, I know cost is not the only concern. I know that residents have a perception when they see something. They assess a value judgment and whether or not your decisions are effective in the best interest of the, of the town. So it's easy for me to say, oh yeah, here's the greatest thing since sliced bread. But I walk out the door and you're the ones who have to take the, you're the discussion, right? So I recognize that. I can tell you that in the case of Sykesville, that's why they went with two monitors. They went to Costco and bought another one off, basically off the shelf, and mounted it in order to be able to avoid this problem of, this kind of a layout challenge where you've got different things, different angles to be able to see that from, from different points of view. You weigh that, again, whether you need to move it or not versus perception. Those are all things that obviously you'd be able to discuss. I'm here just to give you options.
So, a couple of things if I might add. So if we kept that monitor and bought an inexpensive monitor from Costco and put it there, we would be able to see it from the desk or the podium of our, so we'd see both sides. But one thing I wanted to add in that layout, and I guess it's layout number three, in case, in a situation where we might have to go back to COVID restrictions of having mediums, yeah, right, I don't, don't want to do that, don't mean to bring it up, but just in case we have to, this layout here would have two people, and I'm going to move over to try to give you an illustration, sit sharing one desk.
Right.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to. Now, it's feasible, but it certainly wouldn't meet COVID requirements, not, or restrictions, not that, you know, so, I was just thinking that. Might be a situation where, you know, I don't know, I guess we could possibly still flip it. It would just mean we would, we'd have to take up more space. And maybe, instead of bringing, and I'm pointing to the, what is that, the west, the west side of the room, instead of just having two tables there for Donna and the town manager maybe, or attorney, Michelle, maybe we have to have another table there, and then another table along this wall here.
Well, I will add too, that we were looking at adding another table already for the code enforcement officer.
Right.
Or Wayne.
Right.
You know, whoever else from the town that wants to come, so that.
But I mean, even, even when Richard was speaking, you know, the people in here had no issue hearing him whatsoever. So it sounds like the whole room would be covered, you know, in this sort of manner with the microphone.
It is covered. The, the, the difference, though, of doing a compressed layout is really, to avoid the wires on the floor, you would have one box on that wall, one box in the middle, and one box here. If you do a compress where everybody's in the center, you get one box and that's it.
But I guess, and the other layout where it was two per table, you could just use one microphone per table then?
Yes, we can reduce the number of microphones as well. So for example, in Sykesville, with a comparable number of individuals, we have only five microphones. Instead of here, we have seven, and we're feeling like we're just capturing.
Well, I just have another option that's not really in one of these exact drawings, but if we could just keep this same layout and just take these middle tables and move them down that way, and then just move these tables down and those tables down, it's pretty much the same layout. The only difference would be if people came in the door, they would have to walk around these tables. But I don't think that's a problem. If they're coming, and they're going to be sitting here anyway. And you said that it would work better from that wall. Didn't you say that it was more effective from that wall?
Well, from a cost standpoint, it would require only one connection with this bolt head, and accessibility, it would be easier, I believe, to do the cabling from that infrastructure than any one of the other walls, long distance, figuring out how to get from point A through the wall. And I believe these walls have, are not fully studded construction. I could be wrong. But, and also because I believe, again, I'm not a fire code expert either, typically exterior walls have required fire blocks to run cables down through them.
That's what he was saying.
You have to almost open the wall in order to get, get the cable from A to B. So there's the potential of increased cost due to the, just the physical infrastructure of getting through it. But again, without an absolute person coming in going, putting eyes on it, again, I'm not a cable installer either. My.
All right. So I'd like to add a few things. First of all, I think we all have to agree that we will probably never go back to not having some kind of meeting where we have our citizens view it. So we need to be smart about this decision and spend the money once, spend it properly once. Okay? So whether there's a little extra expense of doing something, we need to look at it in the long run of, of what it's going to cost as opposed to a redo. Okay? Secondly, I always thought that this layout was probably the most optimal for this room for a couple of reasons. One is, our public enters through that door. If we are putting our tables along that line where the public comes in, that is going to be disruptive the entire meeting. Okay? We also have, and you brought up the fire issues, we are blocking the.
Egress.
Egress. Those tables are going to be out from the wall. They will be totally in line with that door. So we are going to, and if we put tables on the side, the egress now is much longer to get out of this building, not only when we're having a meeting here for, for our staff who is resident here daily, five days a week, getting out of this building if they had to come this way. We're making it longer. So I'm not sure, even though there may be an additional cost of popping more holes in the wall, that we want to push everyone over there. I also agree with Kevin's assessment that we may never be in a situation where we all feel comfortable sitting two at a table that close. And that just may not be the way it is any longer. So this layout affords us the ability to have space around us, and whether it's us sitting here or the next crew that comes in in the future, that they have the ability to have the room that they need. And again, not spend money to redo stuff in the future. So.
Thank you. Anyone have anything to add?
So where are we at with this?
So, so basically, what we were trying to get out of this is seeing what, what the consensus is for the layout of the room. If, if this is the way that everybody wants to keep it, then.
If, if this is the way that everybody wants to keep it, then the next step would be going to Cory, getting, um, the contractor that he knows, that he works with, that basically runs the cable.
What's the contractor's name?
Uh, I think it's, uh, Central Maryland AV.
They've worked with multiple municipalities and they, they do a great job, um, come highly recommended from CMC. Um, and, and basically what they would do is they come out here, they'd look at the walls and kinda give a rough estimate of what it would cost to run the cables to, I, I would assume the three locations.
I can take this basic drawing, indicate the locations of where cabling needs to go, add the infrastructure for data connections, cuz quite honestly, once you're pulling one set of cables.
We'll do it.
Adding additional cables, then again, that are low power.
Right.
Data or video or audio, there, the labor is already covered and your foot cost for, for cabling for data as mentioned is pretty low.
If I may mention one more thing, we had talked about, um, microphones, right? So that we could hear. Um, I, I guess I have an opinion on that is that would it be in our best interest to have a microphone where the residents have to come up and that is where they speak? So we do not hear anything that may be going on in the, in the galley, um, that we do not want to hear. But if a resident has a concern, they need to get up and come to a microphone and, and s- state their piece. Um, that may help us manage the meeting more.
We used to have something similar to that. It was mostly just for recording the meetings, but people didn't know that. They, they thought it was to, to be heard, but it, but it was a designated spot that you walked up and you stood there and you said, I'm so and so, this is my address, this is what I have to say, and then you sat back down.
So that, that was one of the things that we were talking about, maybe like even in, in that corner, like a podium. Um, one of the things that, I mean, we obviously could do that. Um, CMC was working, I think last, uh, meeting on optimizing the microphones where, uh, they were able to reach the people sitting out there. Um, so it, it, it's something that can be done. Um, we didn't need it right now because we were able to optimize the microphones where they could hear. Um, but there, there's still your concern of, you know, do you hear too much?
Well, I think just for managing the mea- I mean, I think we can all agree that that chaos that we had last month, we don't want that again.
Sure.
So, you know, that's another discussion we need to have. But just for managing the meeting, for the mayor to be able to say, residents' concerns, and then people walk to a designated spot and speak their piece and then sit down and with a time limit like we've been saying the last couple of times, I just think.
So, so do you, do you guys think that a podium in, in that corner would be sufficient?
Yeah.
And if so, we, we would probably add a fourth connection. And, and like the closet, like you mentioned, was right over there, so I don't think it's gonna be too costly.
And then that would save us the, have to drop microphones or anything.
Definitely don't wanna do drop microphones from what we were talking about.
Well, Dave's right, that, you know, this is an investment and we need to think of it lo- in the long term for the, we're good, virtual meetings are a thing that we're gonna just be doing from now on.
And, and that's why, that's why I mentioned the data as well, because, um, I, I see in the future, things only getting data intensive. So if we get the cable while we run the other ones, that way it's out of there. If we need it, it's there, it's really not gonna be much.
So I have one more, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I appreciate the conversation, um, it was very good. We, we, we mentioned that, um, it would give CMC the ability to run all our meetings, right? We could just come in and kinda plug and play, we're gonna sit here and we're gonna talk. What if we had a meeting in here that CMC was not going to, to, um, broadcast? Would we have the ability to run the meeting virtually for our citizens, but not say maybe have CMC do it?
Well, I'll, I'll answer that question two ways. One, uh, there's two scenarios, one is an executive session, right? Which is a part of regular practices that would, um, to discuss a confidential matter. Uh, so obviously you would need a way in order to conduct the meeting without transmitting and making it public. So I just wanna make sure that's clear. Um, the, uh, in the case of Mount Airy, um, I'll put the disclaimer out there that they made a significantly larger investment. Um, they have the ability to run their entire meeting on their own without CMC's presence. But it did require some additional equipment to be invested and make that happen at the same level. Um, Manchester is in a similar position, um, they run their meetings and make it possible. Um, with the equipment that we proposed, there is a method to, uh, actually transmit whatever equipment is here to use that for purposes of transmission either to Zoom or otherwise. So you could even use it for, if you wanted to have a, a, you know, a multi-jurisdiction Zoom meeting, for example, that wasn't intended for public, you could still use the equipment for that purpose. You might not have someone actually maneuvering the cameras around in the case of, uh, Mount Airy. And Sykesville, they decided they would just have just a wide shot. So that you could see everything that was in the room, um, and then, uh, use that as the visual that went along with the audio, but everybody could hear what's going on and so that that was what was most important. So the answer is yes, you would be able to, we could engineer it such that you would be able to start a meeting without CMC's control or without it being transmitted publicly.
Thank you, Richard.
And that was, that was also another thing we discussed is, is basically, um, uh, CMC was, was willing to work with us on, on, cuz we have the special meetings and, and such. Um, we just need to give them notice, obviously, so that they can get the man, uh, man hours to actually run it. Um, but also i- it comes down to what do we need, um, for those meetings? Like you mentioned, the executive meetings, we might only just have a Zoom where, you know, Gary's at his house, um, and, and we're all here. That might just be a Zoom call with Gary, whereas we might not need all the, uh, uh, the, the video and everything. Certainly something we can work with.
Yeah, so it is an and option. You, you can continue to use Zoom in isolation, you can, you can do both, a hybrid scenario, um, so.
Anyone else?
I will do some checking to see if we can use possibly some second transparra money to, um, help, uh, under the broadband aspect of that, to see if that would be covered.
Great. Anyone else? All right.
So, I do, I do wanna add one, so I guess tonight we can agree on keeping the same setup, uh, layout of, of the, of the room the way it is right now.
I would very good.
Gary, just addition of the podium.
Yeah. Okay.
So, the, the one aspect of the podium you might wanna consider, um, in the case of Hampstead, uh, they went with a wireless microphone for the podium. That made it the most easiest to actually get a, uh, podium in the middle of the room without any wires at all. Uh, so that might be a, um, you know, an option there, uh, to make it convenient. Sometimes, you know, if it feels like it's in the back of the room, uh, again, I'll leave it to the layout. You'll see that from the layout. In some of the other scenarios, they did not put one podium here, but they're directing the presiding officer and the other tools of water, uh, you know, speaking to the public, that's typically what's done. So having that sort of clarity of, of positioning can help, uh, in the context of the meeting.
Currently, we have two rows of seats. Is that just, um, because, out of just historical?
Chairs we have.
Yeah, no, but what I meant was by that is that, um, shortening each row, um, shortening each row and making a third, which would allow us to bring the, um, your row of desks closer and this row closer and potentially adding a third.
Can't lock that door, so you have to make sure.
Yep, yep, you're right.
And I think at the same time, you would still have a connection there.
Yeah.
The other one over here.
I understand what you're saying, but I don't think it's possible to.
No, you're right, you're right.
Too close.
Yeah, you're right. All right.
Well, anyone? Richard, thank you for, uh, coming out and sharing your expertise and then basically dividing. Continue to work on this.
The next step for me would be basically based upon that layout, uh, we can talk with, uh, Central Maryland AV and Cory and get them out to look at that, uh, do a markup of this. Uh, and then we'll be able to frame a budget for equipment. Uh, and then that would give you a, a dollar figure potentially to seek, uh, the funding, what alternative methods are for funding.
Sounds good.
Also wanted to add that, um, if, as I have done with others, made the commitment that if there's a shortfall, uh, and that we have equipment that would help supplement or augment what, uh, is provided under either a grant or funding that would be made available from your general funds, uh, we are open to making sure that we have effective coverage. Um, so in the case of, uh, Hampstead where they fell short, uh, we had a camera. We said we will put that camera on permanent loan, uh, to the town, uh, so that it just makes it possible for that kind of coverage.
Thank you.
Richard.
Yeah, to that.
You guys are great.
Yeah, no, it's been, to, and, and thank you. And to that end, um, we also, um, uh, doggone it, um, forgot what I was gonna say. Uh, it'll come to me, I'm sorry. Thank you for coming though.
All right, my pleasure. All right, council people. Number three on me is that we would code violations and issuance of fines. Is Nicole gonna join us this evening, Gary?
Uh, no, she's not, Mayor, I'm just gonna, I'm just giving you kind of an update. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, she's fine.
Okay. So, uh, at the December first council meeting, uh, code enforcement officer Nicole Freeland gave her report and wanted input from the council on issuing, uh, fines and, or citations to residents or land, landlords who were, are, are either non-responsive, uh, responsive to letters or repeat offenders. And Mayor Green suggested we discuss and address, uh, this little, uh, little more at the next regular work session. Um, on December fourteenth, uh, Attorney Ostrander, Nicole and I had a, a meeting to discuss the next step and, and process moving forward. Um, Attorney Ostrander will provide a, a draft letter to Nicole to use for issuing citations. Um, the letter will include basically general language and then list specific code violation items and then the associated, uh, fines, uh, fine amounts. And then we discussed also that, um, you know, the payment of the fines will either be, you know, cash, money order or certified check. Um, would also put in there, um, uh, Nicole's schedule with her being part-time, um, that people can come in, uh, you know, when, when she is there. Um, uh, so I just wanted to, uh, give an update that what, what we met on and, and just kinda let you all, you know, know about that and provide any, any additional input at, at this point.
Be unresponsive to Nicole, but there are a few. And my experience, including experience in this town in the Lanny Mummer administration, so we're going way back, is that people don't take you seriously until you force the issue. And the, it's a fairly simple matter. But the state law has certain things that have to be in the citation and that's why we would, we would work together to draft a letter to make sure that it was covered. And my suspicion is that probably the people who get the letter will then gripe and moan and call the town and say, can you give me another week and then I'm gonna clean it up? Because that is generally speaking what people would do, they'd rather clean it up than go to court. Uh, the process, just so you all know, and this is something that, uh, there's a time and cost associated with it, which is one of the reasons why the council needs to be aware of this, is that we send a citation and if someone ignores the citation, it has to be forwarded to the district court and there has to be a prosecution. And I would be the prosecuting attorney, just like on television. And, uh, and the, there's a hearing before the, before the court. And then the judge decides if we are within our legal rights and Nicole's already got all kinds of photographs. She's very thorough, which is unsurprising. And, um, if someone ignores them or do- doesn't respond at all, then we have to take them to court. If someone objects, they can factually file an appeal with the district court and then the same process obtains that there would be a hearing. Um, it doesn't generally come to that, but she's not getting anywhere with this very small, little bitty handful of people. And she's worked with, with a lot, and most of the people that she has worked with have been responsive. And, you know, if you've got a whole lot of stuff, you can't necessarily get rid of it in an afternoon. So, you know, if, if people are working with us, we're not gonna, we're not gonna be enforcing against them, obviously. But, so that's the process.
So, so Michelle, thank you. Um, I assume that those citations are sent to the residents via registered mail?
They are sent through, uh, certified mail to property owner.
Okay.
So, because frequently the property owner is not the resident. And then the property owner calls and says, my la- my tenants are messy. Sorry, it's your responsibility as the landowner to clean up.
Okay, so I was concerned about, um, Nicole's safety if she had to.
Oh, yeah, no, no, she's not gonna be hand carrying these things.
Okay, and secondly.
And if so, if anyone has to hand serve, it would not be she. I would, we would make sure that it was someone with like a uniform.
Okay. Um, yeah, and I don't, I don't think it would come to anything like that.
No, no, everyone's been, according to her, everyone's been really very, very positive.
And, and secondly, if we did, if the town did go to court over something like that, um, court costs and things like as- associated costs.
Court costs can be attributable to the defendant along with fines. So if the property owner comes in and says, they have no right to tell me to take my trash away, and the judge says, yes, they do, and imposes a fine, that will also cover the court costs. It doesn't generally cover attorney's fees, however.
Okay.
How much time would, would you say that you would put into, if it, if it did come to the citation and have to go to the, to the district court and, and a, an objection or an appeal was made, how much time do you think you would have wrapped up in one of these instances?
You know, it, it depends, but from what I see of what Nicole and I talked about last week, these aren't complicated fact patterns.
Right.
That need, you know, a week of trial preparation for, so I, I would say.
Looking at.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a, that's why we're bringing it up right here. I would say, I don't know, three or four hours, I would estimate, tops.
Per case.
Per case, yeah. But I will tell you, and this has been my long experience, not just in New Windsor or not just in Maryland. Trying these things once or twice is all you need to do. And then the next generation, you may have to try them again.
Anyone else have anything to add, Gary, you have anything to add?
No, I, that's, um, um, I'm glad Michelle, um, um, spoke up there and, and explained some of the more technical side, side of it. So I don't, I don't have anything further to add at this point.
So I'm guessing, um, what, what do we need going forward? Is this just, do we need a decision?
No, no, the, it, it's just, this is really more.
Just, just the lights, no?
When you made the decision to bring on a code enforcement officer, it was to largely to clean up the mess that there are not, you know, certainly not every home and this is a beautiful little town, but it doesn't take much, especially in a dense area. It doesn't take much to be messy. So Nicole's done everything she can so far with these people and, and has gotten a lot accomplished. But, so we're just letting you know that the next step is, uh, writing the nasty gram.
Well, and, and to some extent, we, we did this because we had a lot of res- not a lot, but a fair number of residents complaining about.
Yes.
Properties, and we didn't have a tool to deal with it. I mean, we did, but it was, you know, when you had time kind of a thing. And this is a person who's designated, and this is for the good of everybody who lives in New Windsor because, you know, if, if you have a lot of properties near you that don't, that aren't well taken care of and there's trash and it, it brings your property value down. Your house might look great, but people walk out in the backyard and they're like, oh, what's that? You know, and they move on to the next house.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, it's, it's, it's for the, you know, for the betterment of the, of the whole community that we're doing this, so.
It is now seven fifty-nine, do we have a motion for, do you have it?
Uh, hey, Mayor, um, I do have a, a couple other notes if I could.
Go ahead.
Sorry. Uh, I'll be, I'll be brief. Um, the, uh, uh, FY twenty-three budget, well, I will start, uh, preparing, uh, week after Christmas. Um, there will be discussions, projections and updates of council work session meetings, beginning with the February second council meeting through the May sixteenth work session. Um, we are required to submit the FY twenty-three tax rate to the Carroll County Comptroller by the fourth Wednesday in May, uh, which is May twenty-six, twenty, twenty twenty-two. Uh, the FY twenty-three budget hearing adoption must be complete by the May sixteenth work session in order to submit our, our tax rate on time. in order to submit our- our tax rate on time. Uh, if you can, you can refer to the FY, uh, budget review schedule, which is in your mayor and council only documents folder in the documents and co- tools folder. Um, then also, one more thing is, um, rate study. Our- our current adopted water and sewer rate schedule is good through fiscal year twenty-three, which ends June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. I believe it would be in our best interest to have another water and sewer rate study done prior to the end of the current adopted rate schedule. Um, this is a free service that Circap, uh, provides to municipalities. Um, I've reached out the email to Vicki Prudeman, who has attended the last, um, special work session about putting this on her radar and to let me know how to proceed and what information, uh, is needed. And I'll follow up with her after the first of the year if I don't hear back before then. And then just our upcoming meetings in January are the, uh, council meeting on the fifth and the work session meeting on the seventeenth. That's all I got.
I was gonna bring up, we usually move both, um, work sessions to Tuesday in January and in February because of the holidays. So if we did that, we would have our work session on January eighteenth and- and then in February, it would be on twenty-second? Something like that, yeah. We wanna just go ahead and do- do that?
Yeah, yeah, thank you. I- I forgot about that. Thank you very much.
That, cause the seventeenth is a holiday.
Eighteenth would work best.
In January and the twenty-second in February.
February twenty-second.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ken.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thanks, sir. No one?
What's the date of the county council in February?
Twenty-second?
That's the work session.
There's a work session.
The town council meeting.
The first Wednesday.
That's the second or third.
Whatever the first Wednesday is.
Okay.
The second.
The February second?
February second. And the January meeting is what, the January, what's it? Yeah, in February would be.
The second.
The fifth?
Yeah, the- then January, the meet- the regular meeting will be the fifth and the work session would be the eighteenth. And in February, the regular meeting would be the second and the work session would be the twenty-second.
Just remember your twos.
Yeah, twos, keep your twos in mind.
Okay, so earlier today, I sent out to everybody, um, notification about the CD that we have maturing, um, you know, rates are not good, but at the same token, this is not money that we need to be rapidly, uh, accessible to at the present time. So we sh- we should try to invest it where we do earn a little bit. Um, the checking accounts are, I asked about those as well, they're pretty bad as well, so. My- my recommendation to you all would be to consider moving this to, um, Farmers and Merchants. It is a little bit better interest, um, than New Windsor State Bank. And, you know, anything I need to know is which term that you wanna do, so, um.
Is it a five-year and ten-year term?
Uh, it's, the specials that, um, Farmers and Merchants is running right now are a ten-month and a fifteen-month.
That's not bad.
Yeah, so, the ten-month is point one-five percent and the fifteen-month is point two-oh percent as compared to point one-oh for both a thirteen and fifteen in New Windsor.
Yeah, that's an easy decision.
I just need permission to do that.
I'd say go ahead with the longer term.
Yeah, I would think the fifteen months at Farmers.
To think we're gonna need that money in fifteen months, cause it's designated, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alright then. You got anything? Everybody go with that? Alright. Do we have a motion for?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
Always a favor.
Alright.
Bye.
Five zero. Good evening. Merry Christmas.
Bye, everybody. Happy holidays.
Christmas to one and all.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays, everyone. Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
You too.
Take care.
Me too.